Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Is this the one we're going to introduce here when we go on the record?
It should be somewhere near the front.
Yes.
Should be a couple of car keys.
Are we ready?
All right, it's nine o'clock and we're here for the Bonner County Regular Business Meeting. We're going to start with our invocation.
Father, we thank you for this another beautiful day. We thank you for the beautiful scene that is outside of our windows here now. And how we take for granted so often the beauty that you have made all around us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve you in many different ways. We ask that we'll bless the gathering together of the Commission and those who come to share thoughts and concerns and wisdom. We just ask that you'll bless and direct the events of this morning. And we'll give you all the thanks in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please follow in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the Board of County Commissioners has a new staff member. And so we're going to let Lisa introduce our new staff member.
This is our new Gary Bonham, Lauren Rikenbach. She's my girlfriend, best person. She gets to shadow me.
I heard someone say, I recognize that name. She was at the B. So we're going to get much better reporting since she's in our office now. That was the strategy.
I don't think it was meant to count.
No, no. She has a relationship and so she can make sure we look good in the paper now.
She means our press releases.
Our press releases. Not jar.
Excuse me, if people online couldn't hear the name, can you repeat the name, please?
Lauren Rikenbach.
All right, so with that, she's going to be the person that sits in that front office. And we're coming up on super busy time for the county with the Board of Equalization. And she's going to, she's been working with our staff to learn how to do that. But please be patient. We know that process is already stressful for people when they're coming in questioning. So just be mindful that we want to keep our staff. And so I give grace as we learn to navigate this because this is also this board's first round of V O Es as well. So our calendars are packed really full. So thank you for your patience as we navigated through finding a person. But we're coming up on a busy time, so she's getting a crash course. So we want to make sure we welcome her and let everybody know who our newest assistant is. So with that, we will entertain a motion to adopt the Order of the Agenda.
Based on the information before us, I move to adopt the Order of Agenda as presented.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on adopting the Order of the Agenda? Seeing none, deliberation by the Board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next item is our Consent Agenda. We have two confidential items, one from technology in amount of nineteen thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars and five cents. That's renewal of a subscription and support. And for District Court, a sum of five thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-four cent for security equipment. At this time, we will entertain a motion regarding the Consent Agenda.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, deliberation by the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next item is our clerk or comptroller.
Good morning, Jessica Stephanie for the record. I'm here presenting the claims in batch thirty-six totaling one million five hundred and three thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. And when it comes to the big ticket items, we had two hundred and eighty-four thousand for road and bridge. That was mostly for dust abatement and rock crushing. Fifty thousand for Justice Services for updates to their system. About six hundred and thirty-six thousand for solid waste. That's about it.
All right, does the Board have any questions regarding the F Y twenty-five claims batch thirty-six?
I have none.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of the fiscal year twenty-five claims in batch number thirty-six totaling one million five hundred and three thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this claims batch? Seeing none, deliberation by the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, Justice Services, who has three items.
Commissioners?
Morning.
The first item I have is trying to move some money around out of our lottery tax. So Bonner County Justice Services receives lottery tax monies from Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections each fiscal year. The department has received lottery tax unanticipated revenue in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. The total lottery tax received from the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections is eighty-five two fifty-nine sixty-seven. We'd like to move twenty thousand dollars of that and all that's in the resolution part, so I'll leave that too. To you to go over how we're going to put that into the line items.
Does the Board have any questions?
No.
Commissioner? All right, no questions. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-five dash thirty-eight, ordering the clerk to schedule revenue in the probation services F Y twenty-four twenty-five budget for a toll of twenty thousand dollars to be allocated to account numbers zero three four seven five six five two zero dues slash memberships, five hundred dollars. Number zero three four seven five six seven two zero. Small assets and equipment, five hundred dollars. Number zero three four seven five six nine zero zero. Cellular telephone, one thousand dollars. Number zero three four seven five seven four two zero. Repairs, maintenance, equipment, five thousand dollars. Number zero three four seven five seven four three zero. Repairs, maintenance, buildings, fixtures, ten thousand dollars. And number zero three four seven five seven six three zero. Food, three thousand dollars for a toll of twenty thousand dollars. This adjustment is due to the receipt of unanticipated lottery tax revenue received from the state of Idaho.
There's a motion and a second now?
Sorry.
That's okay. Any comment from the public on this item?
Just to clarify, the food is not for staff. It is for the juvenile residents in the detention center. Just in case anybody is curious.
All right. If there's no further deliberation, roll call vote?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is regarding the pass-through funds.
Yes, and this is actually a correction to the one I did last week. After we put that through, they sent us a new document with a different amount. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had the actual correct number presented to you so we can disregard the one from last week. I don't know if there's a process for that, but this one will replace it because the amount is actually increased.
All right, does the Board have any questions?
This is to fund our juvenile detention clinician.
I guess we'll just need to clarify from an administrative perspective if we need to formally...
You mean how to motion?
Well, in the sense of do we need to replace the prior decision?
So what we can do is in the motion to approve this is we can state that a replacement is due to a clerical error in the motion itself for this item. And then that'll clean that up and we'll...
This would be an amended document.
Yeah. Will that work?
I think so.
Any questions from you, Commissioner Corn?
Nope.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the Memorandum of Agreement to Support Clinical Services and Juvenile Detention Facilities for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year as set forth above and to amend and replace the prior motion for this item. Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? All right, any deliberation by the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
All right, C B A S program.
So my final item is again pass-through funds, receive recipient agreement for the C B A S, which is community-based alternative services. So it's recommended that the Board of County Commissioners approve twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Bonner County Memorandum of Agreement to Support the Community-Based Alternative Services Program. And the Substance Abuse Disorder Services, otherwise known as S U D's, program is previously approved by legal. This Memorandum of Agreement provides state funding for approved treatment programs for juvenile offenders at no cost to the county for the twenty-four through twenty-six fiscal years. What this is, is that we can apply for funds either for substance abuse disorders even all the way up to just in the community treatment, all the way up to residential drug treatment. And then the C B A S funds are, can be used for other things if we, if we didn't otherwise have funding for psychosexual evaluations or psychological evaluations. It can also pay for a treat, regular mental health treatment versus drug and alcohol treatment. So again, more funds that the state of Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections passes on to us, to the community, to keep those kids in our community versus having to possibly commit them due to lack of resources or lack of funding to utilize resources that are available. It's much cheaper to keep them home than it is to send them to a state correctional facility.
Any questions from the Board on this item?
Just wanted to clarify in the description, Director, there's the last sentence talks about the twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth fiscal year. Is that just a typo or is that that the state was providing a broader span of funding, but we're just applying for it in the twenty-five, twenty-six?
I think it's supposed to be twenty-five, twenty-six. I think that is a typo. I...
The motion is correct for the twenty-five, twenty-six, just wanted to clarify.
Yes, just that last part there. I stumbled over that myself when I read through that. So I apologize for the typographical error.
And even if the program spans it a longer duration, we can only apply for it in this fiscal year is the assumption?
That's correct.
Okay, so the motion should be fine.
All right, any further questions from the Board? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the above referenced M O A, which provides state funding for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year for approved treatment programs for juvenile offenders and has been previously approved by legal.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this agenda item? Jim Leedy, please state your name and county of residence.
Jim Leedy Spokane. I'm just curious, did you say the juvenile drug and treatment service program is called S U D's?
Yep, Substance Use Disorder System.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Motion passes. Our next item is assessors' real estate agreement.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the public. Dennis Engelhardt, Assessor, Bonner County. Have one item this morning, that's authorization to sign a receipt acknowledging of a pamphlet entitled Real Estate Brokerage in Washington. We received a request to sign an acknowledgment of receipt of a pamphlet entitled, quote, "Real Estate Brokerage in Washington," unquote, from Black Commercial Inc., who was involved in the sale of Bonner Mall. We received this because DMV leases office space in the mall for its operation and as such is considered a party to the transaction in our owed notification under Idaho Code Section fifty-four dash zero two eight-two through fifty-four dash two zero nine-seven. This is not a contract and signing does not obligate the assessor or Bonner County to anything. There are no fees associated with signing of these documents.
Any questions from the Board or Assessor Engelhardt?
My review of the document, Assessor, it looks like we're just acknowledging that we understand our rights.
Correct.
All right. Any further comment from the Board? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that the assessor be authorized to sign receipt acknowledged of the pamphlet entitled Real Estate Brokerage in Washington.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none, deliberation by the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Road and Bridge.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Topper, Road and Bridge Director for the record. So before you, I got a bunch of wires in my way here. Hang on a second. Before you, I have the Cooperative Roads Agreement affirmation that I'm bringing back again. So on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Bonner County Road and Bridge had a conversation about the U S Forest Service Cooperative Roads Agreement, specifically the portion of Tressel Creek Road from mile post three point seven to four point one eight and ending at Star Ridge Road beyond the county snowmobile turnaround on the Forest Service portion of the road. And, and this was at the monthly road and bridge update. It was decided based on the information that I gave the Commissioners, the potential liabilities and unsafe conditions that could put the county at risk, the potential litigation while sharing this portion of the road with snowmobilers, now that the county does not have a turnaround that is actually off the side of the road. We used to have one that was down off the side of the road away from any snowmobile traffic that was up there. The Commissioners requested that Road and Bridge have this portion of the road removed from the agreement before they would consider signing the Cooperative Roads Agreement. I then reached out to Carolyn Dexter and Joe Heisel promptly after this meeting to have this portion removed from the agreement. They obliged and removed this portion from the agreement. I presented the Schedule A agreement on January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the Commissioners approved and signed the agreement as presented. Some of the folks up there were a little upset because they didn't get improper notification, which they probably should have from the Forest Service and Road and Bridge. And then on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, I just threw that in there. That's not on this thing here, but I want to put that on there. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Commissioners held a workshop with the U S Forest Service and the landowners who were affected by this decision. Road and Bridge, explaining the reasoning behind the decision, offered another option to the U S Forest Service to build an area to keep the snowmobilers off the plowed portion of the road and create a separation. And the intersection of Star Ridge Road would need to be plowed at all times for us to be able to safely turn around. On June ninth, twenty twenty-five, the county had another workshop where the Forest Service has indicated that they do not have funds to do this work. And though it is not their preferred option, they will issue the landowners a permit to maintain this portion of their road. The Commissioners requested that this item be put on a Tuesday meeting where it can be properly noticed and affirm their original decision that was made on January seventh.
So I just want to make a comment so everybody knows. This is not a, this is a road that was being plowed by the county that we were not, we weren't obligated to plow. So it was really a handshake deal, is that the way of saying it, that has existed for a number of years for us to do that work. And so when we're looking at our new budget and how we're spending, we have to pay attention to things like that. And this Board had a thoughtful review of what was taking place and came to a request that, or a decision that, how do you justify one group of people getting free plowing service on a county, on the county's dime where other people in the same situation can't achieve that? And that was a decision that we made to bring it back again after we gave them that second workshop, to have that discussion after the Forest Service explored the option of if they could make continued plowing worth it.
And we also did a pretty deep dive into discussing the safety considerations of snowmobiles from the point of the snowmobile turnaround, sharing the road, because they have no independent means of accessing the groom trails that are further up the hill. And so we were looking at the safety factors associated with having snowmobiles sharing the road with a plow. And we could not come up with a safe resolution to that issue. And so from my perspective, it was both the appropriateness of continued maintenance being considered with safety being an important factor in the decision as well.
I think this one also brought to light how we should have a process and procedure that we follow so that there's consistency throughout the county, so that people don't feel like they're not getting something and someone else is getting something. Because that was, a lot of the comments from the people was that live there, well, they've been getting that service from the county for free for over twenty years.
Yep.
And now they're having to pay for that service. And our position was, that's twenty years of free snow plowing, but we have to put our money in the right buckets. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to affirm the twenty twenty-five Cooperative Forest Road Agreement decision made on January seventh, twenty twenty-five, removing the portion of Tressel Creek Road from mile post three point seven to four point one eight, ending at Star Ridge Road. That is the United States Forest Service road not owned by the Bonner County.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this agenda item? Kevin, welcome back. We haven't seen you in a while.
Kevin Moore for the record, Bonner County resident. So I love the dialogue that you two just threw out. So I'm going to throw out a couple of words that you just used. Free service, you just said. Consistency, you just said. And then brother there, he brought up the word safety. And then we pulled back a little earlier than that about free plow service. And so as I've been listening to your dialogue that you've had about the Tressel Creek scenario, I think we were talking, I think there was some terms thrown out about M O As, M O Us to try to come up with a good resolution, working with the I D L and all that. And so interesting to me, and hopefully particularly for Mr. Leidy and all my peer group, these situations that we get into, as per free plow service, I'm going to go back to that for a second. This makes me, this reminds me, and this reminds everyone of the free service that we give to, for a better bridge. And then before that, packer would buy out and such like that. And so as you said, Lee, I think you said this year you spent, you purchased seventy thousand dollars worth of culverts. There's some interesting dialogue just yesterday from Eltec to where they tore down a bridge somewhere and took parts of it to different places to reuse the bridge.
Kevin, I'm going to redirect you to our agenda item because we can talk about that in public comment, but we're on a specific agenda item.
Yeah, well, I tried to keep it tied into Tressel Creek or whatever, because there are M O Us and M O As that we have with all these different agencies, I T D being one of them.
So I'm going to say we can have that discussion in public comment because we're off of the agenda item, okay? But we absolutely can hear that later. Anybody else have a public comment on the agenda item? All right, seeing none, deliberation by the Board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Director. Airport.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I have one item for you. This is an F A A A I P grant offer for Priest River Airport. This grant offer is in response to an application filed earlier, earlier this year as for Phase Two of the Airport Layout Plan Update for Priest River Airport. This grant will fund the second phase of the Airport Layout Plan and narrative and will include project grant administration, facility requirements and alternatives. Updating the A L P will identify non-standard conditions and pursue solutions to create a safer airport for the flying public. The total grant amount is one hundred thirteen thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars and requires a county match of two thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. I recommend accepting this grant.
All right, does the Board have any questions for Director? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to accept this grant and that the Chair sign administratively.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none, deliberation by the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning.
Kyle Snyder, Bonner County Planner. The item I have for you today is a waiver of Title 12 Appendix A, Private Road Standards and BRCRC 12-624B. The applicant for land use file SS0001-25 is requesting a deviation from the private road standards required. The short plat is proposing to divide 1 19.390 acre lot into 1 9.691 acre gross and 9.273 acres net lot, and 1 9.691 acre gross and 6.329 acre net lot. The file is still in preliminary plat stage of review, pending a decision of V0011-25, which is for a lot size minimum variance. For BRCRC 12-624B, road network shall be designed and constructed to private road standards set forth in Appendix A of this title, except as otherwise noted herein. Road network shall be designed to provide for a continuous transportation system to adjacent properties where topographical conditions warrant. The current access to the property is by way of an existing private road, and this requirement would require that Still Meadows Lane be brought up to current private road standards in accordance with Title 12 Appendix A requirements. Attached is also the request from the applicant.
Is the applicant here or online? No, okay. I kind of leaned towards asking you to read his document so that we, that public understands what he's asking for and the justification before, so that's in the record.
Okay.
Because the, I know it's a full page, but...
I can do it. Okay. So, subject request for a waiver of private road standards requirement. Dear Commissioners, I am writing on behalf of my client Troy and Bonnie Davis regarding their short plat of River Estates to respectfully request a waiver from the private road standards requirement for Still Meadows Lane under Appendix A of the Bonner County Revised Code. We ask that you consider this waiver request by addressing each of the waiver criteria as follows. Number one, no detrimental impact on public health, safety, or public safety, health, or welfare. Still Meadows Lane is an existing road that has safely served our community for decades. The proposed short plat of River Estates does not increase traffic or otherwise negatively affect safety, health, or neighboring properties. Maintaining the current configuration will continue to protect public safety and welfare. Number two, substantial fulfillment of the objectives and standards. The primary purpose of the private road standards is to ensure safe, efficient, and proper road construction and maintenance. In this instance, the existing road already meets these goals. Waiving full compliance with private road standards still achieves the intent of the regulations as the road continues to function safely and effectively for current and future access to the proposed short plat of River Estates. Number three, practical hardship and unreasonable expense. Enforcing strict compliance with the private road standards on Still Meadows Lane would impose significant and unnecessary financial and logistical burdens on my client. The cost and disruption required to widen a long-established low-volume road are disproportionate to any potential benefits, making strict adherence an unreasonable hardship. Number four, alternative proposal effectively serving the purpose. Rather than require full compliance with new construction standards, allowing the continued use of Still Meadows Lane better serves the purpose of the standards. The alternate approach, waiving the standards, is both practical and efficient, ensuring safe access for residents of the short plat of River Estates, without the redundant expense of upgrading a road that has reliably served its purpose over time. For these reasons, we respectfully request that the board grant a waiver of the full private road standards for Still Meadows Lane as it pertains to Troy and Bonnie Davis's short plat of River Estates. We trust that the common sense nature of this request, aligned with the waiver criteria outlined in Appendix A, will be favorably considered. While no outcome can be guaranteed, this straightforward request focuses on preserving safety, achieving the regulatory intent, and avoiding undue hardship. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Christopher James, Land Surveyor, entering.
All right. Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Did the applicant provide any data beyond the request letter with regard to how the actual existing road conditions differ from the county standards?
There is not, Commissioner.
But yeah, I didn't see any such information provided, just statements without facts.
Any questions for staff?
No, I don't quite understand. I wish they, we could have spelled it out a little better as far as what the road conditions that they don't want to do. It looks like they're just splitting it in half. One parcel is going to make two parcels. So, and I don't have those standards in front of me. If that road has been in place for so long and serving the public well the way it is, then it should meet the public road standards, I'm guessing, but for some reason it must That's not a question.
No.
I see you going...
I'm trying to figure out how to say, okay, that's more deliberating of the issue. It's not asking the staff member a question. So I think you don't have a question for staff, but there's a deliberation that will take place with the board after a motion's made. So do one of you have an idea of which way you lean that want to make the motion on this item?
Yeah, I want to also clarify, so we have an existing, just over 19 acre lot that they want to divide into two lots, and then another nine acre. But the description talks about a net of the 6.3. I'm...
Trying to figure out the difference.
I'm missing, the math isn't working. Yeah, I must be misunderstanding because the math isn't working for me with the subdivision of the lot. So if we're starting with a 19.39 acre, and then we want to have a 9.69, a 9.27, and then how do we end up with a 6.32 net when we started with 19?
I can kind of explain that, Commissioner, if you'd like. So there are some submerged lands on the, on the property, and those, that's where you're getting the gross versus the net, because we don't consider submerged lands as part of, when you're doing a, the total land for a subdivision. So it is a 9.61 acre gross lot when you're considering all the submerged lands, but when you're only talking about not submerged lands, it only, it only comes out to the 6.329 acres.
Okay.
So they still technically own that land, however it is submerged.
So then, in fact, they're looking to take one parcel and divide it into two parcels total?
Correct. You're going from the 19.39 acre, hearing it up with a 9.273 net and a 6.329 net.
Let me ask you a question on that same vein. They have a request for a variance for minimum lot size. So is that the, are the, the explanation of what the design of these lots, what they're asking for in the variance? Or is this one of those files where someone requests, it's a step, a subdivide, where they go from, you know, from one size to another size and then come back in and ask for smaller? Is that what the variance is, or is...
The variance request is due to those submerged lands, causing those lots to be under the zoning minimums.
So what is it zoned for?
That is R10.
Okay. That's the, all the questions I had.
Can you tell me why they're wanting us to waive this requirement? What part of this road does it meet the requirement that's going to put them into a financial hardship?
I'm not sure about the specifics. I think just, so the private road standards do require an engineered stamp. I think that, and I could, going, going past what they, they put in their, their request itself, I think, I think I would just be assuming, so...
Yeah, I would really like to see a reason, but they haven't listed one evidently.
They, he did, he does list his justifications on one through four, but not with specific data. Any further questions for staff? All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Do you like the motion, or would you like me to motion?
Don't you dig it?
Based on the information before us, I move to deny the granting of this waiver of Title 12 Appendix A, Private Road Standards, as found in Bonner County Revised Code and Bonner County Revised Code 12-624B.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I just got a quick question for a second. Can we add to that the reason why we're denying, why you're making the motion or not?
And the deliberation, we can clarify.
Okay.
And then you can always vote no with...
A second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. We'll go to public comment. Public have a comment on this, by this request?
Kevin Moore for the record, Bonner County. And so before you shut me down or whatever, we live in America, and so hopefully we got freedom of speech here. And brother used the term county standards a little bit ago, so I'm going to use that as my...
Kevin, you can't use a word to go to a different topic, though.
No, this all fits together. It's talking about roads, whatever. And so Jason here, Mr. Roden Bridge, they have a connection.
Kevin, I opened public comment up specifically, and this is what the community wanted, to be able to comment on each of the agenda items.
At the end, yeah.
No, this is what this comment period is for, is just this agenda item. And so for the concern that you want to bring up, that's not related to this agenda.
These are interconnected.
Just saying we used a county standard, said the word county standard, does not let us go back to Verbetta Bridge and culverts.
No, it does, because Roden Bridge has a connection with, with planning and zoning, because we have planning and zoning codes.
Kevin, but that's not our agenda item.
It is part of the agenda.
The agenda item is whether or not to make, allow a waiver for the private road standards. That's the item. So do you have a comment on whether or not the board should waive the private road standards for this parcel?
Not specifically to that, no.
Okay.
So I'll bring this up at the end.
Absolutely.
Because this is interconnected because of financial burden on a client.
All right.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, still. I do hope that you folks will consider that. I do have a concern, which I bring up frequently, because it will, the statement is that it will not cause risk to the public. That's hard to determine without being able to show facts, which was not done. And my concern is specifically in relationship to emergency services. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
Good morning. Teresa Heisner for the record, Bonner County. I just want to say, if you guys could take a real good look at this file and the terrain, this is my neighborhood, and the Davises are really good at this, so just take a look at the terrain. There's a lot of wetland in there, and I don't think anyone should be excused from, from the standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
Good morning. Dave Bowman, Bonner County. This, I just want to bring up something that I've brought up in a couple of hearings recently that there's been a history in, in the county here of making land use decisions based on people's individual personal circumstances, and it's highly inappropriate. So I'm not familiar with this file, had not even heard of it before today, but, but when they talk about financial hardship, you know, have people wanting to do rezones because, you know, well, my kids can't afford to buy a house, so therefore I want the law changed on my behalf. It goes along the same kind of thing, and the personal, we could have all the empathy in the world, and I often do for these people, but it doesn't, you cannot make land use decisions based, with any of your reasoning, based on their personal circumstances. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any further comment from the public on this agenda item? Ann?
Ann Wilder, Bonner County resident, just, maybe it was in Commissioner Corn's mind anyway, just if they could actually produce the documents that you request, that it might be, you know, you might amend the motion to reconsider if they can produce the documents that proves that, you know, it's not necessary to follow the code. Anyway, that's just a thought.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public? All right, we'll go into deliberation by the board. Commissioner Corn?
I just, I would appreciate a reason, and to me, this, what was read is not a reason, it's just a blanket statement. Why doesn't the existing road meet the specifications now? What would it take to bring it up to county specs? And is that what's creating the hardship? If it takes a $90,000 culvert to put in to split my property from one parcel into two, I could understand that. And then we could look at that and say, well, it's, in this situation, it's not really necessary, so we, I would not mind waiving something like that. But when it's not spelled out, I'm not even sure what I'm waiving.
Yeah, Commissioner, and the reason I motioned to deny is because, one, they didn't provide evidence to back up their statements as far as providing us with an assessment of the difference between the county standards and the current road condition. And then I disagree with the statement they made in the letter under Item 1. They said the proposed short plat of River Estates does not increase traffic or otherwise negatively affect safety, health, or neighboring properties. Well, if you take that existing parcel and divide it into two parcels, you've now taken what could be developed as four dwellings. You can have a, your main residential dwelling, you can have an accessory dwelling, and up to two RV dwellings, so you could have a total of four dwellings. And if you take an average of two vehicle trips per dwelling per day, now you have two parcels that can each build four dwellings. You've just doubled the amount of dwellings and vehicle trips by doing that. So this is a factually incorrect statement, and therefore that can create impacts on the ongoing maintenance of the road and the safety of access. So I just find this to be factually incorrect, so I can't, can't support it.
I see it as the person had the opportunity to provide that type of information, but for me, I rest more on, we have to start having our roads upgraded, and there, there are private roads that, there's not enough for us to really justify saying you don't have to improve roads. I think roads are probably the biggest communication the county receives, positive and negative, about conditions of dirt roads. And when we are, and we have talked about development impact fees specifically to address roads. And so one of the things that, one big reason why I also don't like this is because when we allow people to put their plans forward, they don't tell us the full scope of their plan. They go step by step by step. And so we don't know what the finished product is because they're not obligated to tell us their full plan. And so we don't know what the impact is. They're the only ones that know that. And it's not about just this owner, they're asking to be removed from the obligation of how their subdivision impacts their area, and that those are other people that we have to consider. And in order to bring our roads up, that's why we have the private road standard, because these same private roads then come back to the county and say, now, we want you guys to update the road, or we want you guys to take over servicing this road. And I'm just not supportive of removing that obligation, because that is in part what happens when you want to increase development in the area. And I equally agree that the comment that it doesn't change the traffic, it really doesn't even matter. It's a standard that comes with this development, and I don't think that it should be waived in a case like this. I think it's, should almost never be waived for me, unless there's an extreme circumstance, because roads need to be updated. So that's, that's my position on this one. Any further deliberation?
No, I would just like to say that I have no problem entertaining, looking at exemptions. It's the people's right to ask for an exemption, but if the people are going to really want the board to consider it, I would like to ask for a little more detailed information in the future.
Anything further? All right, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes?
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And Elisa, you'll change the document to the, was to deny?
Yes.
Thank you. All righty. Next one, Alex.
Thank you, Commissioners. So before you is a request for approval of final plat for file SS0005-21 Monarch Vista, which is formerly known as Cozy Cottage 1. The above referenced plat is requesting to divide 1 1.90 acre property into seven lots ranging in size from 11,400... ranging in size from 11,400 square feet to 11,999 square feet. Property is owned Recreation. The project is located off Garfield Bay Road and West Garfield Bay Road. Both are Bonner County owned and maintain public rights away. In Cozy Lane, a Bonner County owned and privately maintained right of way. In Section 21, Township 56 North, Range 1 West, Boise Meridian. The lots will be served by a community water system and Garfield Bay Water and Sewer District for sewer services. The preliminary plat was approved by Bonner County on March 16th, 2022. This file was granted an administrative exception, file number VE 0001-22 for lot size minimums. And that was for the 11,400 square feet where 12,000 square feet was required. And this file was granted an extension on January 31st, 2024, extending the deadline to March 18th of 2026. So all the conditions of approval for this file have been completed, and all notes and easements required by plat approval are shown on the final plat. In your packet, you should have the extension request from 2024, the approvals for as-built improvements from the engineering department, as well as the Road and Bridge Department, as well as the decision letter rendered by the Planning Department in 2022. Oh, and the decision letter for the administrative exception dated February 28th of 2022. And I can answer any questions if you have any for me.
All right. Does the board have any questions?
I don't have questions, I reviewed the findings of fact and those prior approvals, so.
Any questions? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the final plat of Monarch Vista, formerly Cozy Cottage 1, planning file number SS 0005-21, and authorize the chair to sign the final plat.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any comment from the public on this item?
Kevin Moore for the record, Bonner County. So my math's not good today, so what is 12,000 square feet in acres-ish?
Uh, that would be roughly, oh, let me pull up my calendar.
It should be from .26 to .28 based on the other, based on the prior.
And so I'm a little confused, I hear when you guys do these breakups of these land or whatever, it seems like we're always talking five and 10 acres or whatever. So does that make a difference between commercial, residential, and agricultural zoning?
Suburban zoning.
Pardon me?
Suburban zoning.
Suburban zoning? And so because of suburban zoning, you can go to a .28?
With, with the, the already approved variance.
And I, and I can clarify, so lot size minimums in the Recreation Zoning District, which this property is located, is 2.5 acres if there's no urban services, 1 acre if there's urban water, 20,000 square feet if there's urban sewer, and 12,000 square feet if there's both services.
This is in a recreation area, you're saying?
Yes, the, it's in Recreation Zoning, so the deviation was from 12,000 square feet, not from 2.5 acres, because they have all services provided.
Any further public comment?
Spencer Hutchings, Bonner County. How many lots is he dividing it into?
Seven.
Seven? And all seven are below 12,000, or just one of them is below 12,000?
Um, they range between 11,400 square feet and 11,999 square feet.
And so there, there's seven total, so why didn't he just do six?
That's a great question for the applicant, but it's been, it's been preliminary approved, and at this point, we've, all approvals have been finalized, and there are no more.
There's a word preliminary. Right, I, I'm just curious why it wasn't stopped in the beginning? If it's below the minimum, why didn't you just, why didn't we just tell him to do six? That's us, that's my question.
Any further public comment on this? All right, deliberation by the board.
Do you have one?
She keeps flashing it, so every time I blink, her hand goes away. Teresa, do you wanna comment?
Yeah, sorry, you guys were quick on the draw. I just want to say, I agree with Spencer, this is, this is all previous approvals on these plats, which should have never been approved in the first place, but here we are. So, yeah, take that for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, now we'll go into deliberation by the board. Commissioner Domke?
I understand and share the concern that the public has raised. However, this does fit within the variance allowable, and that was approved previously, therefore, I don't think it would be appropriate to try to reverse prior decisions when the applicant moved forward with those approvals to comply with the requirements to complete the final plat. So because of prior approvals that were in conformance with current code, I believe it's appropriate to move forward with approving the final plat.
I agree, and I think that at, at a minimum, hopefully, the community that has issue with the way this done, was done recognizes that when you're watching our planning hearings that we're giving thoughtful consideration to the concerns our community has addressed as it, as it relates to things like this, so that we're doing a better job of looking at the future plan of the entire county and not just individual projects as well. But in the same, at that, we essentially are just approving what was already approved, saying that it's the final aspect of it. Because I'm pretty sure it's litigation ready if you say we're gonna yank the approval.
Commissioner Corn?
I'd agree, they checked all the boxes, and it, it does fit, so.
Okay. All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Domke?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Alex, before you come off that podium, can we do a, a housekeeping thing? And I think Jake's online. Today, there's an agenda item that says we're starting at 1:30, but we're noticed at 4:30?
Um, I would have to check on that, I don't have that, that agenda in front of me. We do have a planning commission meeting at 4:30 today, but we also have a board reconsideration hearing that's scheduled for 1:30.
Okay, so maybe I got the wrong thing on my calendar then.
But I will double check the agenda to make sure that, that was posted correctly.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go into District 1 Commissioner update.
All right. So I'm continuing to receive many, many public comments on a variety of different land use related topics and files. Those are being reviewed and taken into consideration for each applicable file. As I've stated before, some of these, and I won't even name them now, if they are coming back before the board for a decision, we're not allowed to discuss them in any detail. So please understand that that's why you will receive a response in an email that simply acknowledges the fact that the comment has been received and been forwarded on to planning to place in the file. So I'm, I'm reading those comments, but I, I cannot respond in any meaningful way because that would be inappropriate to do so before the public hearing and decision are finalized. So just want people to know that my brief responses are for legal reasons. Also, continuing to work on draft code amendment in response to House Bill 180, which was titled telecommunication facilities and broadband infrastructure, most people refer to that as, as cell towers and cellular service. The board has been discussing where we go from here on that topic, and at our last agendized discussion item on this topic, we agreed to, we directed our legal counsel to start pursuing finding a subject matter expert attorney, to have special counsel to assist the board with drafting that language to amend our county code to address these concerns. So that is a process that will be ongoing, and I'll continue to work toward that end to take the information that I've received from the community and that I've been researching and make sure that, that, make sure that we share that. Should we, as a board, choose to work with a subject matter expert, then I'd be sure to share that information with them and make sure the board's aware as a whole of all of the different items that I've researched, so I think need to be considered with any recommendations that a consultant might bring forward. And then I also wanted to mention that last week, there was a process that took place in a town hall associated with a jail and justice systems assessment. And I do have a number of questions and concerns about the information that was presented and how the information was presented to the public. I intend to review the full report that's supposed to come out in a few weeks from those consultants and really understand in detail what's being offered for information. I also think it's really important that as we consider issues that very well may, may need to be addressed, that we perform a really thorough review of all of the available solutions and options before we recommend any course of action. I don't wanna be premature with coming to conclusions about how to solve problems. So I wanna make sure that there's an, an additional amount of assessment and exploration of solutions that I think need to be considered before the community and the board reach any kind of a decision about what the path forward might be. So gaining information and insight from subject matter experts can be helpful, but we still have to ultimately ask the right questions and come up with the right solutions once we have a starting point of information. So I think we still have a lot of work ahead of us to better understand what's being proposed for solutions and what the, the right needs are and how best to address them. Does anybody have any questions for any of the items I presented? Specific to the items I presented, please.
Kevin Moore, Bonner County. And so, yeah, I don't really enjoy coming here anymore, so I'm gonna try to use every opportunity to speak that I can while I'm here. And so you're always talking about safety and saving money. And so hopefully, as you steadily, I was trying to look at my notes here. As we steadily pay attention to the roads and the safety and how all these things are interconnected through road and bridge and, and planning and zoning, hopefully, my commissioner will steadily pay attention as per the harm that can be done. If we paid attention, if we work with Panhandle Health along with our planning and zoning, hopefully, we will try to better rectify a burden that's been put on a, a citizen and is complicating the safety of the public, as per numerous photographs I've shown you, a broken rail and a derailment.
And so, Mr. Moore, I don't think this is specific to any of the items I presented, but I did, I did speak about, I receive public comment on land use related issues, and I review all of the information and emails I have received from all of our constituents in the county.
I haven't got any return emails from you.
And if I correct, and you will not.
Okay.
We've had prior conversations, and so that is the conclusion of that issue. Thank you.
Any further questions to Commissioner Domke?
All right, seeing none, we'll go to District 2 Commissioner update report. So I have received a lot of questions about whether, what's going on with respect to the jail and the roof. We did reach out to the original person who placed the roof, and part of what we're trying to do is see if there's a way to have a repair made through the contract that we have, that appears to reflect that the, a leak in the roof would require them to do a repair. We don't know if that's probable, but, but it's a possibility based on what the documents show. The jail did have an inspection of that roof, and the value of that repair is upwards of $400,000, which is about what we paid for the roof itself. And so we want to do our due diligence to try to achieve recovery through the people that put that roof on. So that is something that I'm working on. I have also asked our staff to request a meeting with sheriff and the Board of Commissioners to kind of address the town hall. There was a lot unpacked at that particular meeting, and I think that we need a little bit more understanding and direction. A lot of people have messaged me on, are we buying a new jail, are we not buying a new jail? And so we need to have a little bit more information from that department. I attended last night, I'm your Legislative District 2 Vice Chair, so we had our Region 1 meeting because there's a conference this weekend for which I'll attend. Some of the key things that were voted on to support or deny are interesting. I think there's, there's one that will impact counties if it were to actually move forward. So one of the things that, between LD1 and LD2, there's going to be support for is removal of the tobacco tax. The sin tax idea is in, not palatable. I did address some concerns related to the impact of all taxpayers for the comorbidities that can come with that, and that removing that tax without a solution will just leave us with a bill to pay in some cases. So we'll be, they'll be discussing that at the conference. The other one was support that the removal of the grocery tax go on a ballot measure so that people can vote on it. That was one that got support from both districts. Immigration enforcement to utilize e-Verify from our LD1 and LD2, it didn't receive support, so the majority felt it was going to be too cumbersome, and the requirement for people to get social security numbers was too cumbersome. Those, that's not, those are the decisions of support as you go to the conference, that's not the outcome of those particular items. So I encourage people, if you have an interest in having input by way of reaching out to your people that are voting members on the state committee, so that your, your voice is heard. It is, you can always participate even as residents of Bonner County or any county, you can go and register and go to that conference and hear kind of the mindset and thought process of the people that are moving policy and procedure in our area.
Where's the conference?
It is in Pocatello. Very long drive, not worth the flight because then you have to drive three hours back the other direction, so.
The convention year enters at when is it?
The 20th and the 21st, so it's this Friday and Saturday. So I had an opportunity to meet with Mayor Connolly a few times going over Bonner Park West, and I think that it is important for Bonner County to make a decision on Bonner County Park West. They, I had made a comment in earlier meetings that they were working on some expansion and development of that area, and it's a lot more work than I was expecting. There, it's worth us hearing what they're trying to do and then deciding, in my care of our county, it's, is there a way that we could achieve an outcome that might end up with a revenue stream for the county, or is it worth not doing that? They've identified an engineer who's identifying kind of where the marina would be, a shift of the swimming hole to a different side that's more designated and making the section that's currently used as a swimming hole into a marina with no cost to Bonner County residents to use Bonner Park West at all. The other thing that they said is with respect to Sheriff Wheeler's concern when we were discussing that park, was that they would get, they would build an enclosed parking boat slip specifically for the sheriff's boat to stay moored at that location. I'm not saying go one way or another, I'm saying they've got so much work put into this project, it's a 10-year project that's going to cost millions. We were not invited to kind of be part of that because there was not that consideration, but when we were talking about Bonner Cap, Park West, the question came up of, should we look at a way that the community gets a benefit, or do we keep it? And then what do we do with the concerns we had associated with paying a person to essentially manage cleaning up the park because of the level of dirt in the bathrooms essentially? So what they did do was close the bathrooms, there is no park host, and there is a, what is, portable toilet instead of using an actual building. So I'm gonna put this on an agenda when I, if I find time for kind of a workshop to see what they presented, they've got pretty huge maps on their wall of what they're doing in downtown Priest River, and it's worth us making an informed decision. I clearly hear our community does not wanna give up waterfront property, and that is a very reasonable position to hold. I would like us to hear everything at once, so when we make our vote and we're looking at community input, that we can say we considered the whole project because there will be people that say the development they might like, and there are people that say it's our property. For me, my focus is, how do we make something that doesn't cost us money but can generate kind of the payback to us? So that, one of the, where they are right now with their stages is they're doing a shoreline stabilization out there to help with the project that they know is coming forward. But if people have an interest, especially if you're in that area, you can visit with their, their meetings because they do discuss this topic. their meetings because they do discuss this topic regularly down there. So we don't have any updates on litigations, there's been no settlements that have been paid out. There are no open board seats at this time, and I wanted to say thank you to everybody who gave me a card after I was gone last week. It was very thoughtful, and I definitely appreciate it, and I'm catching up on all the emails and phone calls that I missed. Any comment, question to me regarding the items that I listed?
Yes, Ann Wilder, Bonner County resident. I attend the Priest River City Council meetings on a regular basis. They are having an overall meeting on the 24th. I did not get the time. It might be something that you would want to see. They've got, I guess there's a commercial group that is interested in doing a lot of the work for the city on the Two Rivers Park, which is the large chunk of land that was donated to the city and is adjacent to the Bonner Park West. And so this is coming up next week, and I would, you know, Jim Martin, the former mayor, is in charge of all of this, and probably Mayor Connolly can tell you what the time of this meeting is, but I think that it might be something really worthwhile for you to go to because then you'll get a really clear picture of what all of their plans are, and I think it would really help the county in making a decision what they want to do. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for me on what I presented? All right, with that, we'll go to Commissioner Corn.
All right, so I did attend the NIC's Sheriff's Jail Studies presentation last Thursday. It was very well received, the study was very positive. They're doing some good things there at the jail, it sounds like, and I'm waiting to receive the official report hopefully next week sometime. I would like to make a statement that the Bonner County Civil Defense and Resilience Team meeting is next Friday, the 27th. The topic will be how to be more resilient and defend your property in the threat of fire since we're, I'm not coming into, but we're in fire season. And not only just the typical clearances from the House and things like that, but we're going to try and take it a couple steps further and try and show people special tools and equipment that homeowners can have and train on, how to build a portable firefighting trailer to help your community and your neighbors out. I think there will actually be a trailer on display for you to actually come down and look at it and talk to the person who built it. So if you're interested in that, I would suggest coming down next Friday at 5:30. That's all I have.
I'm going to double back because I forgot to answer something. Somebody asked me about what is our contribution to Panhandle Health. So I want to, the number that they originally requested from our county was $513,796. Bonner County had issues and concerns related to some of what they wanted, and our final number that we will have to contribute to Panhandle is $472,317. So through the efforts of being detailed and reviewing what they were asking for line by line, the way that we're doing our own budget resulted in actually every county receiving a reduction in what their requirement was going to be. So if you're watching our budget hearings and it's boring, or you're falling asleep, it does produce good outcomes because it's helping us to reduce our budget and to address putting our money where it's supposed to go. And in this way, we held also a concern of from our side as Bonner County, we have to hold our board members more accountable for coming to our county to give us reports. So our staff is reaching out to set up their quarterly meetings when they give us their report on Panhandle Health. But that's a, it doesn't sound like a big drop, but that's significant in a budget where you can't increase very high to have been, I was the only dissenting vote on that because that's what our board voted, and I treated that vote as it was a board vote, I was just the one casting it. But it was our county that made that concern rise, and Eric responded by looking at the items that we had issued with and removed those from the budget. So hopefully people can see that as a positive view as we look at fiscal responsibility here. So, sorry, I forgot to mention that, but I had it on my screen today. All right, now we will open it up for public comment.
Kevin Moore for the record, Bonner County. And so I appreciate your dialogues there because you, again, threw me off because you bring up some stuff that I need to respond to beyond what I want to talk about. And so as you were just talking about saving us $100,000, or a little less than $100,000, 513 to 472 for the Panhandle Health, from what I remember, and you can correct me whatever, they were concerned about changing some carpet because there was some safety issues, whatever, some buckling up and all that. And so every citizen appreciates trying to wean the budget as best we can. But it reminds me, I think Jason Topp a while back brought up here in this building right here, that many of the doors don't meet DACA, the Disabilities Act. And so many times these entities, whatever, they determined to try to be ahead of a worst-case scenario, safety-wise, and so I guess they were trying to tie in the new carpeting with some other issues too. And so did I hear recently that we replaced some bathroom doors in this building or whatever to make them DACA?
We did update the bathroom on the second floor to make it accessible.
So can you give me a ballpark figure what that was?
I don't know that figure.
A generic number?
I do not know that number. I can email, I can ask Teddy and email you the answer.
So all the other doors aren't DACA approved then? That's, we just did the one?
It wasn't for doors, it was for the bathroom facility.
I see. So the door is DACA-approved, whatever, it is wide enough then?
Yeah, each one has a stall that's wide enough.
I see. So now back to the original scenario about safety in our community and citizens' personal rights. And so, as I tried to bring up earlier, our road and bridge having MOAs, MOUs with numerous entities, because there are, you brought up a minute ago about complying with requirements, you said, thoughtful considerations, you said. And so hopefully with MOAs and MOUs with these numerous entities, Panhandle Health, ITD, all these governmental agencies that are concerned about environmental health and just public health in general. Several years ago, hopefully Mr. Topp was appraised of how they redid three culverts on Highway 95 where the train derailment happened, that ITD came in there after that train derailment and redid three culverts through there. So there are companies that do culvert repairs that, when they realize that there is an issue going on there. And so also hopefully Mr. Topp is attuned to our, and give me latitude, I don't have the article in front of me, but I think Sandpoint, City of Sandpoint was talking about in the news that there was a culvert that they blocked off some roads here in town or whatever because of a culvert failure. And so hopefully all these things have to do with MOUs, MOAs, and complying with regulations of these different entities that are out there.
So Kevin, I need you to wrap up your comment, please.
So I'll leave it at that. We've gotten, paid out numerous litigation money in the past with the Redder Bridge and Pack River buyout and all this stuff, and assistance is asking for remedial action for the safety of the public and meeting Clean Water Act and many other regulations.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, for the record. Like to mention meetings because I've been doing a lot of those online, long drive just to come for 30, 40 minutes. Many of them do not show the Zoom attendees on the screen. That would be nice one because you have an idea as to whether you're the only one or there's others. And just the person on the screen at the podium is the only one being able to see those. My opinion, continuing to allow growth as it is and has been happening without increasing our assistance to Leo Fire and Medical is and will be putting the residents and the visitors at a level of risk that is unacceptable. I understand growth, I understand the need for growth. Money does allow things to be done, but those increases in density and building and areas of increased response time need to understand and pay for those decisions. So as people are building, developers are. Priest Lake has had two fires this past week, which again shows the strain on the fire service when that occurs because they occurred in a very short period of time. The fire department doesn't get to decide, oh, I'm taking my engines away from this fire and sending it to another one until the incident commander gives that. I would like to mention that it would be appreciated by myself and many others in the community to have a discussion with the fire chiefs, to have a full understanding of the risk that can, could occur with the fire districts because of equipment and especially the problems that they have with that, the lack of manpower, mutual aid, lack of volunteers. And again, I'll bring up the Edgmere Grange and seeing if there's some way to be able to assist in getting an AED there for the safety for those that utilize the Grange and that part of the community. Thank you.
On your comment on the fire, a lot of people reached out to me. They held an open house where they discussed some of the changes that are happening, like in, I think it was Coca-Cola. And so when we, our calendar is very booked, but people have asked to bring back chief to kind of give the state of fire, because one of the things that they're communicating is they didn't know that all people were going to be removed from one building. I wasn't at their town hall, so I don't know what was discussed, but people have asked for kind of a post-levy look at what does the state of fire, knowing that it failed, and what's their plan moving forward. So once we get some time in the calendar, I'll work to bring him back for that conversation and equally bring back Southwest Bonner County's, our fire chief doesn't start until July, but bringing that person in to also give updates in our area, okay? As far as your AED, the difficulty I'm having with the Grange is that it's not a community center.
And we have a community center.
I know. So that's my stumbling block, but I am looking diligently for a grant, but the Grange is giving me a stumbling block. Did you have a comment? Did, yeah, okay. Mr. Lady?
James Leedy, Spokane. I want to voice my strong support for Kevin Moore, who has been unfairly impacted by the state of Idaho's decision to alter the water flow on his property. This change has led to severe flooding and significant damage to both his land and the buildings on it. What's even more troubling is the lack of response from Bonner County officials. It's deeply disappointing that the county has not stepped up to help Mr. Moore address this issue, to protect him from the consequences of the state's actions. The role of our government is to advocate for and defend its residents, especially when they are harmed, when they are harmed by decisions made at the state level. In this case, Bonner County appears to have failed in that responsibility. This failure not only undermines public trust, but has also exposed the county to potential litigation. When local government stands by as private property is damaged due to state negligence, it risks becoming complicit through inaction. Mr. Moore deserves immediate support and decisive action, not just from the state, but from the county he calls home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Catherine Farag, Bonner County, for the record. This is regarding the censure of Bonner County Commissioners by the BCRCC.
Scott Herndon states, and I quote, "It focuses on one thing, the vast majority of the BCRCC does not want our county government to govern under the guise of an emergency. The abuses of government during COVID suggest that we want our local government to govern publicly, professionally, deliberately, and with the required public notice. In other words, please follow the normal legislative process for all county governance." Bonner County Commissioners under 74-204 and 67-6523 have the authority to both declare an emergency and amend the agenda on the day of the regular business meeting. If Scott Herndon and the BCRCC don't like the statutes, they can change the statutes. That's what we do in accordance with the rule of law and the Constitution of our beautiful republic. Neither Scott Herndon nor the BCRCC have the authority to censure anyone for following the law, saying the emergency was a guise and then citing COVID was a cheap shot. How they think Brian or Asia's actions are even comparable to COVID abuses is beyond me. Scott Herndon and the BCRCC should rescind the censure and issue a public apology. And I can't speak very well because of a medical condition, so I'm losing my breath. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment on this. There is not a clear, and people have been emailing me about this, and I just haven't been addressing it because the people have been asking Scott to review the process. I don't, I know that the word censure is used, there is only one censure in terms of the Republican Party, and that's Title 20, and that does not appear to be what this actually is. So clarification has been sought on that. I don't know, I do know that a different chair for a committee said that the board or an individual can just ask that they review a decision that was made. So those are options, and I know that some people in the community wanted to take that path with Scott. Diane Willey.
Yes, I just want to comment about what Catherine said. I am stunned that he is now saying this all has to do with the emergency contingent, the health and welfare of this county. That's a lie. His referendum does not use that term at all and does not state that that's why he was taking a big dig at the two of you. He does owe you an apology. I think he opened himself up to litigation now. I think Scott Herndon's out of control, and I think the BCRCC should be embarrassed that they're following a man who would lie. You two had made an error, well, there was an error made, that was remedied. Scott Herndon had made a vote with the BCRCC based on the MLD and your decision to put a halt to the MLDs temporarily, and he didn't like it because he's with the builders. And now he's going to use COVID? Give me a break. If you don't like that our county is responsible for the health and welfare of its people, you're crazy. Was that abuse with COVID? Yes, it was. But that you take care of at a different level than to obliterate the commission's care for the health and welfare of the people. That's what you do. And I'm embarrassed to even say that I've ever been to a BCRCC meeting at this point. Shame on them. Thank you.
Teresa?
Teresa Heisner, Bonner County. I agree with the previous statements. I just want everyone, every Republican to know that if you speak out against the BCRCC on this issue, you will be thrown off of their social media platforms, as myself and a handful of other constituents have been thrown off of their platform. As far as the MLD decision and the emergency that was declared, it is an emergency. And Wayne, to correct you, we actually had three fires north of the Pondory River this last week, and we do need our fire department in spite of what the BCRCC stands. So I stand with my commissioners. I believe that the censure should be redacted and an apology issued. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Spencer?
Sorry, I'm just going to dogpile on to that. I'd like the members of the community that are paying attention to this, the few that are, I'd like them to reflect on how the BCRCC treated the two previous completely out-of-control commissioners and how they're now treating the two probably, you know, referring to Brian and Asia, probably the best commissioners I've ever seen in the county that are paying attention and trying to do things legally and correctly and for the public good. And that we have a so-called Republican Central Committee that is attacking these two great commissioners. it should really be a wake up call to the public as to what kind of Republican representation we have in the Bonner County Republican Central Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
Good morning, Dave Bowman, Bonner County. I will use the term that Mr. Hutchings did and pile on with everyone else. I appreciate what Ms. Farick brought forth. And I agree with Ms. Heisner and Ms. Welly. Anybody else will agree with that. They're all correct. I don't need to repeat any of it. I would like to address something that Wayne Martin did. And I've brought it to the board's attention more than once and to the planning department several times is that when planning, what Wayne was referring to was planning meetings, not just county meetings. We're looking, I'm on Zoom right now, and I can see the room and I can see the every participant that's on, which is pretty typical for a Zoom meeting. And for some reason, at the planning meetings, and and right now, you, Commissioner Williams as chair and the other two of you can see who's on. If someone's hand is raised and you have control as to whether or not to call on someone, where the planning, at the planning meetings and planning hearings, the planning director or whomever is working with him has complete control, they're the gatekeeper. And so the chair of the meeting or the hearing has doesn't get to see, the board members don't get to see, the other members of the public don't get to see who is on, who might have their hand raised. And I've I can't tell you how many planning meetings I've been to where I know because I'm getting texted, hey, I've got my hand up, I've got my hand up, and and they're not recognized. Where if in there, you're in the room, you might get recognized. And then at the end of the meeting, maybe after everything's all done, the planning director might go, oh, you have one hand up online. Would you like to hear from them? And they'll go, well, who is it? And that's not the way to run a meeting. The chair of the board or the chair of the commission should be running the meeting. And part of that, running the meeting, is seeing who's in the room and who's online. So I again, I've brought this up a number of times. Wayne brought it up, or it happened during a recent hearing. And he reached out to me by text or by phone. It really needs to get fixed. It's it's part of the whole mission of transparency. Thanks.
Dave and or anybody who's seeing this as a problem, is it that when someone's sharing their screen and then it bumps the names up to the top and you don't have control over sliding it? Or is that just not present?
Nothing.
Okay.
No, they're just not there. And and it's, you know, it's an easy fix for whoever's running the Zoom portion of the meeting. They just don't want to do it for some reason.
All right, I'll send a message and copy the both of you on it to have Jacob and our technology look at why that has shifted.
Appreciate it.
All right, Teresa, let me go to Diane. Is that a second comment request? Because we would be going on round two. Or is that Dan behind that hand?
Asia, it's Dan Welly.
It's like Hollywood Squares. I got it right. Got it, Dan.
I'm going to use this opportunity to make a statement because if I were to attend the BCRCC meeting, the chair of that body has disallowed public statements at those meetings. It appears that Scott Herndon considers that his personal fiefdom to control, much like a dictator. I was surprised, dismayed, and really aghast at what he did with this referendum. I I found his tactics to be pharisaical in the manner that it was presented. And I, his behavior is abominable. I feel that the Republican Party is a big tent and allows for many people, many views of the policies and the platform of the Republican Party. For instance, the three of you do not always agree on every issue. I do not always agree with the way you look at things. That's the way it should be in the Republican Party. And people are welcome to disagree. That's how we work things out. But restraining and prohibiting people from having input is dictatorial. And the chairman of the BCRCC should hang his head low for his behavior on this thing. He should recall that referendum and apologize to the Republican Party and the county. His behavior is unacceptable. Thank you.
All right, Teresa, are you asking for a second comment?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say that I appreciate Dave bringing up what's been happening in the planning and zoning hearings for these Zoom members that want to make public comment. And I'm saying this because I'm one of them, and it's happened numerous times. And with the history of this planning and zoning department, it feels a little shady, like they don't want to listen to what the public has to say. And we all know that transparency is the bridge to trust. And the BCRCC should probably take note. Thank you again.
Kevin Moore for the record, second round. Transparency is the road to trust. And so I'm not going to say too much, but I have been wanting, I've been trying to find Teresa Heisner's phone number. And so I'm going to ask on the public here if Teresa can give an okay for Asia to give me your contact information.
You just assume I have her phone number?
Because there are some things, as you, Teresa, as you steadily dialogue, I would like to visit with you so you get a more firm feel of the Verbetta Bridge thing that happened up in your area and how it ties in to a culvert down in my area. So I'm publicly asking for connect with Teresa.
All right, Mr. Martin? Or Anne?
Anne Wilder, Bonner County resident. I think that people should attend the BCRCC meeting tonight because this subject is is not closed, and it's going to be brought up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Martin, for the record, Bonner County resident, as of three minutes ago, I believe.
You have to be here for a year to give public comment.
Okay. As to the planning committee and and what is visible, I have written the three of you about one of the meetings. I was going to write about the second one where you had members of the planning commission in this room. And the apparent disregard or lack of caring by body language and appearance, if you go through and watch the the recording of it or got to see it and all, that is not the way to have a positive attitude from the public towards them. And I understand, and I'm I'm going to hit the comp plan. I understand it's been a long time. One of the commissioners was on one of the subcommittees. It has been forever, it seems like. And I understand they're done with it. They they just want it to go to go away. But but the way that you appear, the way that you present yourself and people see it, that does lead to what Teresa was talking about. You know, you want us to sit there and believe and trust in you. My comment, Dave's comment, you know, you don't let names appear. It seems shady. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, with that, this meeting, it's